The League of Women Voters of Rochester, I'd like to welcome you all tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time. Welcome to the forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for your help. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never support or oppose political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester, or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of a candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an educational opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters Rochester, the Post Bulletin, and Chamber of Commerce, as well as members of the live audience, and questions that have been sent to us online earlier. You are welcome to submit as many written questions as you like on the note cards that we have provided. Just hold up the cards as you finish them, and a volunteer will collect them throughout the forum. All questions will be reviewed by the, by league volunteers. Questions that are unclear, hostile, of our personal nature will not be used. Given our format, your questions must relate to both candidates. Questions that fall in the same general area may be consolidated to allow me to cover as much as possible during our short time. We appreciate questions that are forward-looking rather than of the past. If an answer is unclear, feel free to submit a follow-up question or contact the candidate after the forum. Cards become the property of the League of Women Voters Rochester. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in this limited time and space. We may not get to all the questions that are submitted. Feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. I would like to thank all the candidates for running, for offering to serve your community, for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for the Rochester City Council Member-at-Large position. Candidates for this seat are, as you see up front, Sean Palmer and Randy Schubring. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance and here tonight. Candidates will have each 60 seconds for each answer of questions. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates to make your answers as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time, that entire 60 seconds, for your answer. When your time is up, you may finish your sentence, but you must conclude your answer. Each candidate also has three-second rebuttal, three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question, or only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you've used it. That will help you keep track of how many you have. I'd like to remind the audience to remain silent during the forum. Hold your applause until the very end of the forum and turn off your electronic devices. The timekeepers tonight are League of Women Voter Rochester members Jan Strand and Ashley Neeling. Questions will be screened by League of Women Voter members Mary Jones and Dee Valdo. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin, Ryan Parsons from the Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order of their opening and closing statements, and, I already forgot, candidate Schubring will begin with your opening statement.
Thank you to the league, the chamber, Post Bulletin, and the library for hosting us today. With overwhelming growth and investment in Rochester, I was motivated to run for Rochester City Council President to ensure that we are smart, intentional, and inclusive as we grow. I will be a new voice on the council with demonstrated leadership at the state, city, and neighborhood levels. I serve as Rochester's representative, appointed twice by Governor Tim Walz on the statewide airports commission. This is a $600 million agency, same size as the city of Rochester, considered by both sides of the political aisle as the most effective and efficiently-run state agency. In this capacity, I chair the capital construction program, where I review and approve over $1 billion in construction projects a year, including roadways, runways, fire stations, police stations, and over 2 million square feet of terminal space. At the city level, I chair our Planning and Zoning Commission, where I've reviewed and recommended to the city council development plans, zoning changes, and our new Unified Development Code. I am proud of the broad support I've generated from you, my neighbors, local businesses, and our social services community. I count among my supporters current council president Brooke Carlson, former city council member Nick Campion, a majority of Rochester's state legislative delegation, as well as those in the trades, including our local plumbers and pipe fitters and electrical workers, Faith in Minnesota, the LGBTQ Victory Fund, and Moms Demand Action. I look forward to tonight's forum to discuss my priorities for the city and our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Palmer.
Well, the good news is that we won the primary, and that's a big, that's a big step in an election. There's out in the community, listening to people, and they ask, they'll say, hey, I voted for you, and the first thing I ask them is why, because I'm always curious on that. Firstly, item is experience, six years on the city council, 30 years of watching the city council, understanding the, what it takes to be on the city council. The second one is construction. The next eight to 10 years of all the construction stuff that's going to be happening, and I have that experience, I have that education to be able to ask those questions, be able to tell people, this is what we're really talking about. And then the third one is nonpartisanship. Everybody in Rochester agrees that we should be nonpartisan, and we have a city council and county commission. I was asked by Mr. Peterson, or there from the Post Bulletin, do you have to be born in Rochester to be elected? No, Rochester's always been a welcoming community. In fact, my 13 years at the, at the Dan Abraham Health and Living Center, I got to meet so many new people coming to Rochester, and listen to them, and listen to what their, their different ideas are, and what do they love about Rochester. The different cultures in Rochester make Rochester what it really and truly is. It's always been that way. I'm very proud of the fact that February 6, 2023, the city council voted seven to nothing, to have the staff come back with incentives for single-family dwellings. Home ownership, the American dream. The Maxwell Study, that we've done twice now, has set goals for housing, and we are meeting those goals on apartments. We're not meeting them on single-family dwellings. We need to do more. We only, we need to be doing 900 houses per year. Last year, we did 211. We, we have to do better. I look forward to our questions tonight. Feel free to contact me. My name is Sean Palmer, Rainford City Council President. You can contact me at palmerward5@gmail.com, or you can give me a phone call at 507-254-9484. And I appreciate everybody that's here in the audience, and some new faces, but a lot of old ones. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go next to a question from the League of Women Voters. I'm going to divide this into two questions because it's a big question, and, and I'm going to give you a little bit extra time so that you can answer both of these. So beginning, we're going to begin with candidate Palmer. According to the recent ALIS study released by the United Way of Olmsted County, one of every three, one of every three households in our county is unable to meet their basic needs, which may include housing, food, childcare, transportation, healthcare, and technology. In what areas will that information impact how you make decisions? And to, to add to this, the next question's going to be about homelessness, so if you'd like to address that separately.
You want the first one answered?
Yes, I do want the first one answered.
And it's one minute?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I clarify, is it one minute for the ALIS study and homelessness?
One minute for the, for the question about the ALIS study, but you don't need to address homelessness, because I'm going to ask that in the next question.
Got it. Thank you.
Wow, like a preview.
Yeah. Candidate Palmer.
We just finished setting the tax levy for us for the city of Rochester, and one of the things that always is difficult is how do you make those decisions? And back in July, we made a decision to increase the pay for our, our public servants, our, our police department. And, and that's hard to do. And we have to explain to people that the city of Rochester's taxes are very low compared to other communities, but they're investments. We need to be spending that type of money. How do we save money for people? Sometimes looking at what we do, what we use tax money for. But also housing, housing's a huge issue for people, and how do we get it to be more reasonable? How do we get it to be more streamlined, so that we're getting a better product at a cheaper price and a quicker way of doing it? The other one is transportation. If we can do better with our transportation and the rapid bus coming, if you can eliminate a car for a family, you save $9,000 a year. That's real savings. And those are things that we can do together with the county, with the city, with the state, to make things better for the city of Rochester and the citizens.
Thank you, candidate Schubring.
Well, I serve as a vice chair of the United Way here in Rochester, and so I know the ALIS report, and I see firsthand those who are struggling in our communities. You do too. They're our neighbors. They're childcare workers, home healthcare aides, cashiers, and others who work low-paid, paying jobs and are one emergency away from poverty. I grew up in public housing. I also, for a time, our family were, were on what used to be called food stamps. During the Christmas time, I picked up Christmas presents at the Toys for Tots shelf. So I understand those that are struggling here in Rochester, and it will be a primary focus for me on the council. I will partner with our social service community, business community, and foundations, as well as bring new, good-paying jobs to Rochester to help lift us all up. We must ensure the rising tide here in Rochester lifts all boats.
Thank you. And beginning with Mr. Schubring, what do you think the city council should do to help people experiencing homelessness?
Well, I true, I support truly affordable housing, whether you are a family that can't afford a down payment on a first-time home, or you can't afford an apartment. Like I said, having grown up in public housing, I believe that safe and affordable housing is a human right. The city must be more aggressive and creative in working with the county, the housing coalition, and builders to improve access to rental and first-time homeownership for essential workers, senior population, and understerved communities. We must also think creatively, work with the, the building trades and RCTC to encourage people to go into the trades, plumbers, electricians, and carpenters. These are small businesses, entrepreneurs. This will infuse more into our workforce here in Rochester.
Thank you, candidate Palmer.
Thank you. We do a good job of working with the county, and we're working together to make sure that our brothers and sisters, our, the people who need our help are out there and getting that help. And I think that's important for, remember that this is an issue for the whole United States, and how do we do it in the state, and how do we do it in Rochester? You know, we, the city has funded the overnight shelter. We gave extra money so that we knew that people would have a place to stay at night. Not everybody wants to use that shelter. We've worked with the police department and, and having people go out and talk passionately to, to the citizens that are out there, people who are, really, truly need our help. It's not compassionate to hand out a tent and tell somebody to go sleep in a park. Last year, we had three people die in a tents. That's just not acceptable in this city or anywhere. We need to be more compassionate to our people, and I think we are. I believe that the, the camping ordinance was a step forward to doing that. It was a tough issue that we worked with. The police chief asked for it, and we needed to, the goal for it was to get people to help, get them to, so they can seek services, so they can help themselves.
Thank you. Our next, we have a rebuttal.
Yeah, so my opponent does talk about affordable housing, but in fact, he opposed an affordable housing complex in northeast Rochester that had the highest score in the state as a site. He was, luckily, a majority of the council did support that project, and now it is home to 66 families across from Century High School.
Thank you, and another rebuttal.
Well, it's kind of interesting. On March 21, 2022, we had a vote for whether or not we're doing prevailing wage, and the city council voted to take away the prevailing wage. I did not. So I don't know if your construction people understand that you're not for prevailing wage, but prevailing wage is something that we've had for all of our large 66-unit buildings. That one has an exemption. I didn't vote for that exemption, and we did that on March 21, 2022, if you want to go read it.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll begin with candidate Palmer.
Good evening, candidates. Rochester is one of the fastest-growing cities in Minnesota. What is your plan to ensure that our infrastructure and services, thinking of public safety, transportation, utilities, and so on, can handle this growth while maintaining the city's quality of life?
Well, that's a big question, and you know, with my construction background, in the next eight to 10 years, it's going to be interesting. It's been interesting the last six years under the different construction projects that we've had. I think the number one thing that people expect us to have in downtown and Rochester's public safety is to have a safe city. And I think that we've achieved that. We have a good police chief. We have a good way that we're moving ahead on that. As far as assets go, we have a triple-A bond rating. We've had that for over 50 years. It takes a lot of effort to see how we do, what we do. The last forum, they talked about TIF financing, and that's tax increment financing. City of Rochester has a very low percentage of, of using TIF. And when we incentivize that to grow our city and, and move ahead, we're lucky, last year, the citizens of Rochester approved the sales tax extension. We did over 26 different presentations I attended, telling people the benefit of that, and that was exciting because that passed, and that, that gives us an opportunity to invest in Rochester in a different way.
Thank you, candidate Schubring.
I think the most important thing, as we go through this five-to-seven-year period of transition, as we have a lot of construction, is communication. Communication with local businesses, communication with neighbors, really let them know what we're going through, and also let them know how wonderful it's going to be here in Rochester after we see a $6 billion investment by our major employer here in Rochester. One of the other things I think we should do while we're going through the, this struggle is leverage what we're seeing as far as investment, and bring in new businesses, broaden our, our commercial-industrial tax base to take the burden off our residential taxpayers. Rochester has a lot to sell. We have the brain power, the work ethic, and the southern Minnesota charm to have people come here and make sure their businesses are successful.
Thank you. We'll go on to the Post Bulletin. We'll begin with candidate Schubring.
Rochester voters approved a sales tax extension last, last year, which included the creation of a new $50 million vitality fund to address housing and other concerns. What do you see as the priority for city-funded housing efforts?
I, as I said in the, in the previous answer on housing, we really have to look at our underserved community. The ALIS report that we just addressed in, in the first question talks about 33% of Rochester residents, these are our neighbors, who are struggling financially and one paycheck away from poverty. So we really need to work on senior housing. We need to work on workforce housing, and we also need to work on efforts, and it, it's not easy, but work on those small efforts to, to bring in natural occurring affordable housing, because the project that my opponent talked about recently, those are houses that are in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. I'm glad the city council opened the door to TIF funding on that, but we need to really work on low, on lower-cost housing units.
Thank you, and candidate Palmer.
Well, that's an interesting take on, and so when you talk to different people, and I've talked to over 90 different people, bankers and, and real estate people, and builders, and construction, that, that really and truly what we need are more houses. The supply is low. If we can raise that supply, then we can lower the prices and make it more affordable for people to be there. One of the ways that we do that is, is by using an economic fund to, to give rebates back to fees that people pay to the city of Rochester, and that incentivizes builders to start that market again. We don't want to be in the housing market, building houses, but we do want to start that ball rolling again. In, in 2008, it devastated that industry, and, and now we're trying to get people to come into that lower-level house price-wise. Good news is Bigelow just announced that they're going to be doing the entry-level houses again. We helped out with incentive on that with the sewer, that we did a million dollars, that we're going to front the sewer on it, so we can get those entry-level houses going again. You got to remember, it's, it's the Country Club Manor, as a Sunset Terrace, Elton Hills Homes, that, that are there. That's the affordable housing. And when you talk about natural occurring, that's houses that are already here.
Thank you. Then go back to the chamber and ask for another question from the Chamber of Commerce, and we're going to begin with candidate Schubring.
What barriers do you believe exist that might prevent development in Rochester? And with that in mind, what are potential solutions to those barriers?
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the issues that we worked on, and we worked on at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the city council did pass it, was our Unified Development Code. And that did streamline the process, make it clear to, to developers that these are the guidelines in, in Rochester, and, and so I've talked to the business community. I've talked to construction staff as well, and they see things that are, things are better. We can't, we, we need to continue to tweak that, but again, we need to put out a welcome mat here in Rochester. Mayo Clinic, major investment. We all know that IBM isn't what it used to be. We need to make sure that we use our boot leather and get out and sell our, our city to small businesses in Mankato, the Twin Cities, and others, as well as distribution centers. We know Rosemont got a Costco distribution center. Mankato has a distribution center. So we need to, we need to sell our city.
Thank you, candidate Palmer.
It was interesting, Reddy had a, a housing forum out in Byron, and they had all the small cities come and say, you know, what, what do we want to do? And the number one thing across the board was, we are welcoming. We walk with the developers. We want them here. The questions that wasn't asked is, do they have sewer capacity? Do they have schools to be able to, to help out these people? The disadvantage in Rochester, and we have a disadvantage, which is really an advantage, is that our unemployment's about 2%. Our wages are, are above average. And so if you have an employer coming to town, like a Costco coming to town, they look at the bottom line and go, I've got to pay a starting guy $25 an hour. I don't, I don't compete. So they go to a college town, they go to a place that has a larger income. We have a very extremely intelligent residents here in Rochester. We have one of the highest educated population, and, and they don't, they don't belong at a, at a Costco to say, because that job is a different type of job, and we don't offer that. Again, unemployment at less than 2%, it's hard for people to find employees.
Thank you. A question from the audience. Disability advocates warned the city that Peace Plaza would not be ADA compliant, but they proceeded, and now we will need a costly remedy. How would you prevent taxpayer money from being spent on noncompliant projects in the future? And what should the city council do to make Rochester a better place for people with disabilities? Oh, and we're going to begin with candidate Palmer.
Well, I'll start out with what we do do. We do meet the minimum standards of the building code, which is, is the most amount that we can ask developers to do, but we've been working really, really hard for pedestrian facilities, been working really hard for that, that sidewalk cuts, and, and so that when you're walking down, or you have a wheelchair, and you're crossing that corner, that it's safe to cross that corner. The Peace Plaza is an item that is done with the DMC. It's, it's being studied, what we can do. It's, it's not what everybody wants it to be. It's, I hate to say it this way, but I'm a carpenter in, in the four corners, and, and just move on. I'm not an art critic. When they proposed to do this, it seemed a little odd to me, but I didn't say no, but DMC is in charge of fixing this mess, and I think that they will.
Candidate Schubring.
Well, as city council president, I will be on the DMC board, and also Brooke Carlson is currently on that board, so she's a member of the city council, so you do have a say in that, council member. There have been missteps with DMC on the pavers. They, people unfortunately have tripped on them, and so in my role as, as the D, DNC representative on the, our, the council representative on the DMC board, I, I think there needs to be a little more oversight of the, of the projects. DMC is great. It infuses a lot of money into Rochester, and they've done an excellent job on infrastructure, but we need to get them back to their original focus, which is bringing businesses downtown, working on getting, getting customers into our local businesses outside of the clinic.
Thank you. We have a rebuttal.
And, and DMC gets a, a bad rap at times, and, and we won't go to the Peace Plaza, but, but you look at what they did for Soldiers Field Pool, what they did for the, for the park. They said that we'll give you this amount of money, you do what you think is necessary. You look at what they've done for infrastructure, underground stuff that nobody really wants to pay for. DMC has, has actually been very good for the city of Rochester. It's a partnership between the county and the state, and, and yes, the president is on it, but I'd hope we'd get the Peace Plaza fixed before January. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next- Our next question is regarding climate change and sustainability. We will begin with candidate Palmer. If elected, please describe your position in respect to supporting public environmental sustainability and carbon emissions reduction projects, and why?
Well, the biggest area for the city of Rochester is RPU, Rochester Public Utility. And the interesting thing about these guys is that five to 10 years is short-term thinking to them. And they're investing right now in what are we going to do so that we can get our carbon footprint less? The thing we have to remember, though, we have to have dependability, reliability, and affordability. And some of the ideas that people have out there just are not working right now, and they're not going to work. But if you looked at the plan that RPU had for Monday's meeting, you can see that they have a plan, they're thinking this out, they've looked at the ratepayer, they've looked at what we can and can't do in the technology that's out there now.
Thank you. Candidate Schubring.
I believe that Rochester needs clear and defined goals. I serve on the, as chair of the Environment Committee on the Statewide Airports Commission, and we address four key goals: emissions, water usage, waste, and staff engagement. And one of the key goal that we discovered is staff engagement. You really need to work at the governance level, the senior staff level, to work with your staff because you're asking people to change the way they do their business, to incorporate sustainability into their work plan. And from a governing board standpoint, we then get benchmarks on progress to those goals, whether it's resources, staff, or meeting those goals. I think it's this model, I would encourage my colleagues on the city council to look at this model and others to make sure that we're clearly focused on what we want to achieve.
Thank you. Next question, we'll begin with candidate Schubring. What specific policies or actions do you propose to keep our BIPOC and LGBTQ neighbors emotionally and physically safe?
Well, like I mentioned before, I serve on the United Way of Olmsted County, and so we serve our BIPOC community, we serve our underserved community, and we also serve marginalized communities. I am a candidate who enjoys the endorsement of the LGBTQ+ Victory Fund. I am a member of that community. My husband is sitting here in the audience, and so I have a lot of affinity and understand marginalized communities.
Thank you. Candidate Palmer.
Well, in the city of Rochester, the citizens expect everybody to be safe. I would expect everybody to be safe, and that's what the police department and everybody in Rochester should be welcoming and safe. The thing, I go back to home ownership. The BIPOC community is about 22% home ownership. We need to find a way for them to get more home ownership. How do they get that American dream? And if you look at the median net worth at the Federal Reserve, if you own a home, you're at $396,200 for your net worth. If you're renting, it's $10,400. Now, a lot of people don't know how to own a home, but they're classes, there are ways to do that. Some people don't have down payment, we have that. But, you know, to me, 22% for home ownership is a huge issue that people kind of don't talk about. And if you're a European-American, you're about 80% home ownership, and you're building that wealth. That's a huge difference as you're building wealth for your family.
Thank you. Next question from the audience. We are going to begin with candidate Palmer. How would you propose that the city of Rochester increase public transportation and reduce the need for individual motor vehicle ownership?
Well, the biggest investment that we're doing right now in that is the rapid bus system. And it was interesting when we first got the notice that we were going to do this and propose to do this to federal government, we went out to the Indianapolis area to visit to see what a rapid bus was. The mayor and I were both, wanted to have rail. And after riding the Indianapolis one, we saw what a great facility that is, and how much it helps out Rochester. And so if you think about going from Cascade Park all the way down to the Fullerton Lot, every five minutes and have somebody have that transportation, it will relieve a lot of what we need to do downtown. There's a large amount of parking ramps that we can eliminate if we have this, and that's a big investment. And you know, and Mayo Clinic stepped up and said, you know what, we're going to help fund this, and about 95% of the cost of the operating it for 20 years is going to be done by them. That's a phenomenal step up for us. We also have parking rides, North Broadway, we have one coming up, we just opened one on 52. So you can drive into Rochester, and you can take a bus into the city, and we don't have to have cars. I think that's the future. I think a walkable campus downtown is a wonderful thing for Rochester.
Thank you. Candidate Schubring.
I am going to completely agree with my opponent on the bus rapid transit. I think it's an important, important alternative transportation. We also have to take into account the third level of transportation, which is bicycle commuters. We are seeing a younger demographic coming into Rochester. They don't want to use their cars. And so we need to make sure that bicycle commuters have that separation that we need to protect both those of us in vehicles, those that are walking, and especially our patients and people with ambulatory issues. So making sure that we look to the future and know where Rochester is going as far as, as far as the demographic moving to our city.
Thank you. Question regarding taxes from the audience. We're going to begin with candidate Schubring. With small businesses asking for tax relief, the school district, county, and city looking to raise taxes on homeowners, how will you see a plan to help homeowners with high property taxes?
Well, I think we need to think long-term as far as our city budget. We recently had budget discussions here in Rochester, and we're thinking small. When I'm on the city council, I am going to be looking at our budget and making sure every line item, we look for opportunities to leverage and bring in more revenue to the city. I mentioned earlier, commercial industrial taxpayers. Also, look to opportunities for grants and, from the state and the federal government. We here in Rochester lose out big time when it comes to local government aid from the state. I vow to work with our Rochester Legislative Delegation to draft legislation to get Rochester's fair share. We lose 10x to what Duluth, Mankato, and Austin receive.
Thank you. And candidate Palmer.
Well, it's a good thing that your home values are going up. That means your investment's doing good. If you're in Minneapolis or St. Paul, your property values are going down. Duluth, your property values are going down. And so that's, part of the tax increase is because of the value of the houses are going up. There are state programs to help people, and I encourage people to look at those state programs and to help them out with that. But if you look at the budget, it's what the city council hears from our residents of what's important to them. And the three things that we hear that are important to them, and three things are basic. Number one is public safety. Police, fire, flood control. Number two is public works, it's roads, it's how do we plow your roads? And number three is parks. And parks are so important to everybody, and the investment that we make in our parks for that community development, that community spirit that we have. But those are the things we need to do. And so this last budget, we asked people if they had cuts to make, we made some cuts, we didn't make some cuts. But the citizens sent me a note saying, please ask for this, and we tried to cut some of the budget, but it's hard to do. It's not a lot of waste in our budget.
And rebuttal.
Well, my opponent did offer a few performative, very small proposals that he actually didn't even own himself, and one of them, actually, he did not vote for himself when it came up. And I'll also add that you have to look at your needs and your wants. And earlier this year, we, the city council, made a decision to build a new pool at Silver Lake. That is costing our taxpayers $500,000 a year, and it's 0.5% of our levy. So we've got to think big and what our needs are.
Thank you. Regarding sports and recreation, next question, we'll begin with candidate Schubring. Where do you want to see the new sports facility put of the three current potential choices?
Well, I don't believe that's going to be my decision, so I'll look to my opponent to give me a wink and nod as to which one is on top of the three proposals. I would say if I had a choice, I guess I would go with the former IBM site, and it's a location that visitors coming from the north will see as they come into our city. There's also some really amazing plans to surround that with townhouses and retail and other amenities for the city. And it's also in the city and connected to our infrastructure now. One thing I will add, though, is when we do work on the regional sports center, it's important that we have access to citizens here in Rochester. That's really important, that's what I will be fighting for next year.
Thank you. Candidate Palmer.
Well, I'm not going to use rebuttal, but 0.5% for seven years for a second pool that we, is as old as I am, built in 1959. I think seven people in the city council said that was a great idea, and that's why we did that. As far as the sports facility goes, we're looking right now at informed decisions. How much is it going to cost? What's it going to cost moved or dirt? Whereabouts is it going to be? And so that's, that's going to be a decision that we're going to have to do as a city council and make informed decision. The sports facility is interesting because it's built for the citizens of Rochester. And you say that, and they're going to be able to use it. The last one that we built was the volleyball center, that's been very successful. We have the rec center that was built when I was a kid, I sold candy bars for it to be built. But this is going to be for citizens to be able to access it. But if you're going to have basketball courts, or you're going to have baseball fields, you want to have enough to have a tournament, so that, you know, if you only build eight and they want to have 10, you've lost a lot. And Rochester's unique because our hotels are empty in the weekends, and it'd be helpful to have more people here in the weekends using those facilities.
Thank you. Following with a budget question, we'll begin with candidate Palmer. Is the approximate 56% of the city's budget money allocated for public safety too little, too much, or about where it should be set?
That's an interesting question, and obviously, I think, six of us decided that it was just about right. We have a city administrator, we hire a city administrator, we hire a city attorney, they propose budgets, they talk with their staff, they come to us with proposals. Not every department gets what they want. I think the police department would probably want more, I know the fire department would want more, I know that the library wants more. And so you have to make those decisions. And it's a balancing act. You talk about taxes, you talk about needs, you talk about services, how do you balance those out? And it's easy to be like on the Planning and Zoning Committee, because you only have to look at one little thing. We have to look at everything. And how do you get economic vitality? How do you get things to work in Rochester? So, you know, as a city council member, you basically are balancing things with wants and needs, and what do you think for investments? You know, we should be very proud of Rochester, AAA bond rating for 50 years, our tax rate is very low, we have a growing community, and I think people need to step back and say, you know, we're doing damn good.
Thank you. Candidate Schubring.
Could you repeat the question?
Is the approximate 56% of the city's budget money allocated to public safety too little, too much, or about where it should be?
I think where we are when it comes to public safety, I think we're in a good place, and we're comparable to other municipalities of our size. I think when it comes to public safety, you know, one, I commend Chief Franklin, I love that, the fact that we have community policing programs here, and we have a shop opening up in downtown. And so it's important that our officers be seen. I went to four out of the five Safe City Nights, and the partnership between our police department and our community is amazing. We need to keep building on that and working on that. And also, I really, if we're talking about police, I really also must commend Chief Franklin and his team for stepping up when we saw hate and discrimination in this community in two or three incidences this past year, and really made an effort to be out front on that. We do need to also make sure that we hold the perpetrators accountable as well, though, in those incidents.
Thank you.
I got a rebuttal.
Yep.
You know, that's an investment that we make in public safety, in fire department, in with the police department. And if you don't make that investment, you have an unsafe city. You know, Mayo Clinic has some people who are their competitors, and you can't walk two blocks away from their clinics to be safe. If we're not safe in Rochester, last night, bless you, last night we were out walking around after the debate, and the city was booming, and lots of people, and I felt safe walking down the city. And I think that's important for people to remember, that we have a safe city, because it's an investment that we make. And I agree, Safe City Nights is an investment. We need to make sure we build trust in our community, that our police department trusts the community, and the community trusts our police.
Thank you. I think we are going to go on to closing statements. Candidates, you have two minutes to speak, and candidate Palmer will go first.
No, I think I go first. He got, I got the first word, he gets the last word.
You do, you do.
Well, thank you all for being here, thank you for, those of you listening online. We're just 47 days until the election, and I'm out on the campaign trail every day talking to you and your neighbors about my passion for moving Rochester forward together. As your city council president, I will fight to ensure everyone has an opportunity to thrive. This includes bringing new businesses and good-paying jobs beyond healthcare to Rochester, and working to build safe and affordable housing for all residents. My passion for this city starts with community connections. As a neighborhood leader, I work to enhance neighbor-to-neighbor civic engagement and opportunities to connect with each other. It's the cornerstone for a safe and thriving community, and it's where we build trust and respect. I'm glad my opponent said earlier that you don't have to be from here to run for city council, that was not what he said at the earlier forum. And I want him to know, I respect people who grew up here, and take every opportunity to learn about our city's history. But we must, however, recognize that Rochester today is twice the size of it was when Sean and I were kids. Our citizens include those who moved here from small towns in Iowa, Wisconsin, southern Minnesota, where Rochester is the biggest city they've ever lived in, others like myself who moved here from larger urban areas across the US, and our international residents from Delhi and Mumbai, Belgrade and Buenos Aires and more. I will have all of your perspectives in mind when, together, we make decisions to move Rochester forward. I humbly ask for your vote, honor before November 5th, and if you do support me or my opponent, please tell all your neighbors, friends, colleagues, and family to make sure you flip your ballot over to vote for your nonpartisan candidates in referenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Palmer.
I am out in the community, I'm listening to what my neighbors have to say, and I think in the last six years on the city council, that's one of the things I've learned, is that you have to listen to all sides. I think that's really, really important. You know, we're nonpartisan in the city of Rochester, and I'm proud of that, and I get labeled, you know, what are you? And the Democrats think I'm a Republican, the Republicans think I'm a Democrat, so I must be doing something right. You know, it's, there's not an issue there that goes that way. We didn't talk about the library, and it occurred to me that the library, I'm a runner, and I'm running with some of the people I run with, and talking about bringing their kids to the library. And what a great investment that is in Rochester. And I was fortunate enough to be the building inspector for the city, and I walked into the Mitchell Center and opened up those big brass doors and stood there, and the marble was green, and you walk down the stairway, and when you walk down that stairway, you had that feeling and the smell of when you were a kid, you went down there and the fireplace was there. And it struck me that what a big difference that made in my life to have the library, a public library that I could walk to, that I could go there. And that was really a neat experience for me. You know, we did win the primary, and I'm going to say that about 200 more times hopefully in the next two hours. And it's a wonderful thing, because it's hard work, it's hard work to win a primary. And we did it by And we did it by listening to people, and I'm proud of that fact. It's an honor to serve on the city council. It means simply an honor to serve in the city council. And I will bring my experience, and I will bring my listening ability to listen to people. It's a clear choice. You can vote for somebody who's been on the city council, somebody that cares about Rochester, or you can talk to somebody who wants to be just like St. Paul. I don't want us to be like St. Paul. That would be horrible for Rochester. And I want to make sure that everybody, that Rochester's growing, but we can grow together. We're here for the head of the future for Rochester, for everybody. We always have been, we always will be, and I don't believe I've ever said that you had to be on the city council, be born in Rochester. It's not like being president. And so I'm kind of confused by that. But anyway, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad that you're listening. I'm glad I listened to people, and I took the step to become the city council president.
And we have one quick rebuttal.
You did say, Sean, at the last forum, that you asked voters to, you said there were two reasons they should vote for you, because you're from here and you're on the council. And I am from here as well. I've lived here for 15 years. I've had two homes here. I brought my family here. I'm committed, and I love this city. It's going to be the city of the future, and I'm invested in it.
All right. Thank you. Before your applause, thank you, candidates. I'd like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I'd like to remind all of you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thank you to the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 5th, and that early voting starts September 20th, which is in two days. Please remember to vote. If you have questions about your polling place or see a sample ballot, and to learn more about the candidates, visit vote411.org. To see this forum again, excuse me, you can go to the League of Women Voters Rochester website, or the Rochester Public Library YouTube channel. The library and the League of Women Voters post complete, unedited recordings of this forum on their websites. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts and edited clips of this forum may not be posted on candidate websites or social media, or used for political purposes. Thanks to the League of Women Voters or the Rochester Public Library's recordings, however, links to those recordings are welcome. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming. Remember the library closes at 8 o'clock, so beat it.